For first order of business approval minutes. Joe.
Second.
Tammy.
There was one. Apostrophe S in here somewhere. Seriously, one, and I look for them all the time and you do so awesome. Oh, I did mark it. First page, Business Administrator's Report. Debbie O'Connor reminded the board that there were manifests that require board review. Well, she does such an awesome job that I look for those stupid little things because everything else is always perfect.
Jay Aron said I was the best tonight.
I would agree with that. I absolutely agree. Yes.
Okay, with that, minor revisions, all those in favor? Signify by saying aye. Opposed, exceptions, and that carries. Next is the approval of non-public minutes of June. Make a motion. Thank you, Joe.
Second.
Thank you, Tammy. Any further discussion on that? And all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, intentions, and that motion carries. Next up is correspondence. We did receive some correspondence, but we have to deal with any non-public.
Yeah, that's one we'll have to, one we can deal in, one's non-public, the other one just to remind her that you're the senior exit servant in the packet. Take notes, kind of interesting.
And then Business Administrator's Report looks like, do we have something from Deb or?
Yes, right near your folder.
I did see that.
Is it the? Just a few reminders of what you need to do.
This will be attached to the summer.
At least two signatures, you know, before she sends it out. And the SAU hours are seven to five, Monday through Thursday. And that's it. If you need anything, I mean, if you have to come in at some other time, that's fine too. Just give us a buzz. This one in an hour.
Thank you. And then Superintendent's Report.
See, I just put some pieces of information. The district report card is in your packet. And I'd like that approval, but you know, when you do that. Because I want to send it out to the other boards tomorrow. So I just. And that's the information in there. Just went through the list of people who or positions that were leaving, and I gave the reasons as to why they were leaving, just so you know.
And so is that list starting when?
As of now. So these are all the positions we're filling.
So for this, starting?
As of June 30th, these are the ones that are empty. And these are the reasons why.
Have, so have any, have any of them been filled?
Yeah, yeah, we've had some filled.
Can we list them in the minutes, just for the sake of transparency? For the reasons?
Which one?
The one career enhancement, one retiring.
Yeah, we could put this on, yeah, we could put this in the minutes.
Yeah, just for the sake of transparency, because it's, I mean, I know it's out there in the public that, oh my gosh, she lost 15 people. Well, some of them have really good reasons. They're going back to school, they're moving up in their careers, they're retiring.
Yeah, and just to remind you, on the support staff, a lot of those people we already knew were only going to be there.
You knew you only had them for a year, right?
Do these people want that information public?
I think it's public information anyway.
Is it?
I wouldn't believe so.
If someone goes in and says, I am leaving this position because of X to whoever, is that public information? They don't know that between the definitions of what. I mean, I think we can say we've had, you know, X number leave from administration, X number leave from teachers, X from support staff.
Yeah, we don't have to use their name.
Yeah. It's such a small school though, so that if we, if we delineate it the way you did between support staff, teachers, and admin.
Did not.
Yeah, if you lumped them, I think we're fine.
Well, I mean, you know, we, we have career enhancement, we have some retiring.
And then you gave her sort of numbers and gave like the three reasons.
Yeah.
Percentages based on the 15.
No housing available. I don't think it's affordable, otherwise, I think there's none.
Yeah, that's sound.
It's such a problem in town.
$2,500 a month, $3,000 a month.
It's just nice to know that, you know, because it's, they lost 15 people. It's not like 15 people that just haven't quit. That's not it. There's, there's some that retired, but some couldn't find housing and didn't want to travel. There's, you know, there's reasons other than, you know.
Some went back to school.
Exactly, exactly. So just for transparency, if we can generalize, then it's perfect. Thank you.
How many of these has we filled so far?
Let's see, we filled music.
One elementary ed.
One elementary.
Two administrative positions, right?
We did the principal.
And the director of people services.
Director of people services. We have an administrative assistant that we're in the process of filling.
So that would be five. One, I believe, we're not filling, we're choosing not to at this time forever.
Yeah.
That's one of the elementary school positions?
Yeah, that was at the very beginning. Okay, so I'll just continue.
Yeah.
Um, let's see, summer projects, they're moving forward. Everything is on schedule, that flooring. I'm going in and watching how they do it. The machines they use is just amazing.
Yeah.
They stripped everything down like in one day, and they took everything out. So they have a big huge machine that comes in and scrapes the floors.
Yeah. Yeah.
So anyway, that, that's.
Amazing, the things you could do with the right tools, huh?
Yeah. And then the HVAC in the elementary is going great, but they're, they're, they're working and that's moving forward. And let's see, what else? I'm switching on two different reports here. Graduation was a success, and that happened, and we had our, also had a continuation that went well. Again, seemed to be pleased with that. And just to let everyone know, you had 20 graduates and $69,000.
I know, isn't that incredible? Absolutely incredible.
That's the highest.
It is. It's the community.
From the community.
Yeah, it's just incredible. I think part of, I don't think that's going to be the trend. I think part of that is that during COVID, some of those really didn't do much at all, anything, although their income stream continued, so they had access, if you will, so. Still, it's, it's awesome. This, this class lucked out. It was a really awesome thing, yeah.
So the other thing I did include in the packet was a document from the Manhattan Department of Ed for the ESOP programmatic monitoring. Just to let you know what type of report we get back in the documentation that we have to have, we have. We're just collecting some of it, and, but we do have all of it, and we'll just send that in, but it's very complex, you know, very interesting. We are still looking into a day for our apportionment funding formula committee, meaning it will be on a Wednesday. Now, we just don't know which one's day. Baker will be coming back into town at the end of this week, so next week I'll have, I'll send out a memo to everyone.
Scheduling around, Mr. Baker?
Yeah.
Yeah, perfect.
Yeah. Let's see, surveys in there. I think that's it. Everything else I think can go according to the agenda.
So can I ask a question about that thing?
Yeah.
It looks like we had one sort of deficiency.
Right.
And it was just a, just a lack of information?
Oh, yeah, we didn't give them enough information, so we have to go get that information.
But that's, so it's just participation, participation in attendance records for the catch-up learning stuff.
Yeah, just that was specific data they want, so we're going to go back to the part data.
That should, that sounds like, in all other areas, though, we are doing what we need to do using the.
It's always, you know you're doing it right. It is still a nail-biter every time you send one of those reports in, even though you know it's right. It's still.
I know, that's true.
Yeah, I totally get it.
And that's it for my report. Principals' report, let me just see if I, I think I checked everything. Report cards were sent out, and the SAS results as well as the, the SAS SAS results are the state testing. Those results went off to parents as well as the NWM data went out. And we're still waiting for that. What takes us a long time is although the SAS test scores come out now and we get to give them to the students, the state has to do their thing with putting in all the data and measuring and comparing and all that stuff, so that we have the data to compare to the state and the individual. They're working on that now, so that's why we get ours later, like at office or something like that, so that we have something to compare with. And that's why your report is, when we report to the board, it's a little bit lighter than, you know, it's just a process. It's a long process that they go through. Then that's it for the principals' report.
Thank you. Up next is committee reports. Let's see, policy for last. Is anyone else?
No, that was it. Just had your, your policy was in your policy. I'm there for the second reading.
All right, let's do policy first. Those are, it looks like those are the first read.
Yeah, we didn't, we, we already recorded. These are all on for first reading.
Yeah, so we approved a bunch of second reading policies last.
Right, we passed them on, yeah.
Yeah.
These are the first reading ones, yeah.
So there was a couple that, that we had had some questions about, and then, and they came back. And I was reading through, and they don't, nothing seems to have changed. And I don't know, maybe that's, maybe that's the recommendation, is that we keep it.
Well, there was a couple things that were.
Yeah, I actually had a couple of things, but I can't speak to them right now, so they're on first reading, which means I can still speak to them next week. Yeah.
We can speak to them now, yeah.
No, I said I should. I need more time to look into things.
Yeah, there was a couple that.
One of the questions was like the patriotic exercises thing, and, and some of the. I had about, but it looks like it's largely verbatim from the statutes, and so I don't know that we can.
The only thing that wasn't was the general John Stark one, when the fourth graders have traditionally studied him before they go to the State House.
Yeah.
Field trip and stuff, so.
And then the other one that is back, and I, and it looks like it's the same language as the poor as the animals on school grounds.
Well, that's the one.
And again, I, I know we had this discussion at some point, I'm just trying to, I thought we had settled the issue.
Switched a few things, but.
Yeah, IMG is the one. I was looking at it, sorry, I'm a little unorganized. I was looking at the notes. The discussion was held around rewording the last paragraph of the policy. And then I have Sharon's notes. The minutes, sorry, not Sharon's notes, but the minutes. And.
Okay, so interesting. This is different than what I was reading, so.
Yeah, there's animals in the classroom, not on the ground.
No, this is the one, though. This is, it's animals in the classroom and on, and on school grounds. So IMG, and then we had talked about, so in the email, maybe I was just reading the recommended policy version?
Probably.
Did you send that?
It was confusing because the policy committee met, and this policy appears in our handbook, so we really need to get it.
Right.
Going because we need to approve the handbook by the next meeting as well. So we had the discussion at the policy committee. We were going to keep it at the policy committee level again, because we still wanted to work on that last paragraph. There's some, was some issues with it saying that the superintendent approves the procedures for the animals, but the procedures for the animals are already in the policy.
Right.
So, and then there was some other details. So Judy looked at it, we worked that last paragraph, and we sent it back out to the policy committee the day before we sent it out to the board. Asked if there were any other reviews that they could see, and then we sent it out to the board with the changes.
Okay, so this is with the changes.
I guess the policy that I was reading didn't have this, these changes in it, so.
Gotcha.
I'm trying to think of, maybe I. Maybe I was reading. We'll look at the email, what it said. Oh, yeah, I guess I missed it, but it says these are the NHSBA versions of the policies for first reading.
Right.
So I didn't catch that this has been changed. I'm looking at it now, though. It seems to still, it seems to prevent sort of what we often see is people like walking their kids to school with their dogs. That's not uncommon, and that is still not allowed in this policy. As I see it, because it's basically, it's no, you know, not on school grounds during hours.
During school hours, because school's not open yet.
Wow.
Yeah, people drop their kids off after 7:30.
That's where you have a big, um, gone before then. They can have them on a leash.
Yeah, but that's after hours.
Anytime while school buildings or on school grounds, anytime.
But it says animals are not allowed on school grounds during school hours unless authorized. Animals are allowed on school grounds after hours, anytime, anytime they're, you know, so basically.
Okay.
I just think, you know, if you want, if you, if the idea is to prevent that, then.
We need to police it.
We, then there's got to be somebody that's going to police it and say, you can't, you know, you can't have your dog.
Right.
Drop off, you can't, you know.
When was this woman last edited, Jay?
This one, yeah, 2012, but there's, there's no way.
Since I've been on, you've had it this.
We have, yeah.
I had like a policy made about pets, and I don't know where.
Maybe it just never.
I think that we talked about.
It was brought up by Tony Drappo because there was, because I think there was. Yeah, there was, there was dogs at games and, and, you know, it was, it was largely being allowed, but the policy. And so I think the idea was at the time, let's, let's make our policy what we're actually doing.
Right, right.
Because it doesn't seem to be a problem, as long as people are being thoughtful about it, and I, you know.
So shouldn't that go along with this, though, minus the inside of the school thing, whatever we came up with then, which I don't know.
We researched minutes.
Yeah.
And could not find anything in the last number of years.
Yeah, I definitely did talk about it, but I remember the conversation mostly being around the fact that the signs didn't match up with our policies or something like that. And then I think the outcome was, we determined there was nothing that we needed to change, that we were doing what we were doing, but it doesn't seem that way.
Okay.
I actually remember having.
Number two out of them?
With the, with the board, with the district's attorney about the policy. There was a conversation, I think, that you had with the attorney about whether or not, and then we talked about, maybe the insurance, talking to the insurance company about.
Right.
Changing the policy eventually, and so there was.
So look at that number one on the back of that page.
Yeah.
Where it says animals are not allowed in school buildings, and then look at the parag, the paragraph underneath number two. It's conflicting, is it?
Well, unless you just take number two out of there and make number one its own paragraph.
Well, I think. No, I mean, I mean, the paragraph below number two.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that that paragraph, though, is talking about, because there is situations where animals are approved to be in the building, right?
Correct, right.
So.
Well, it says unless authorized.
So that's, so it's not, I don't think it's inconsistent with one or two. It just means that, you know, I, I don't, I don't see an inconsistency. I, what I see is, so animals aren't allowed in the building unless authorized, and there's, and then the whole policy before that talks about when an animal is authorized. And then there's other ones that, you know, animals are not allowed unless on, on school grounds during school hours unless authorized, but they are allowed on school grounds after school hours. So that would be sporting events and things like that. And again, no, anytime where they're, when, when they're on school grounds or in the building, they have to be in control on a leash or properly caged, or whatever.
Can we just take number two right out of there?
I think that is confusing. Take two out of there? That means.
Take number two out, make number one its own paragraph.
No, because we still need to say, well, we need to say animals are allowed on school grounds after hours, first of all, and we just need to, well, we need to decide, are we not going to allow people to bring their pets on the property to pick up and drop off like they already do?
Right, I would say they can do that.
Yes, so then we just need, yeah, then we just need to alter it to say they're allowed on school grounds during hours on a leash, and as long as they're under control, whatever that.
Can we just say they're allowed on school grounds, period?
No, but we need to.
It already says that in there.
Yeah, yeah, but.
Because I ordered the sign that no grounds on property, and then we had to take those signs down. So it's a shame that.
Number two. Because everything else that needs to be said is already in there.
What, what's the, the paragraph that I think makes sense is the one that you guys were talking about, though, anytime other, in school buildings or on grounds, caged or on a leash.
Right.
In control. We understand that, but there's, there's certain, there's only certain times when animals are allowed on school grounds, either through the approved process through the administration, and, and those are allowed at any time. Otherwise, they're only allowed after school hours. We have people coming onto the property with their animals.
All day long.
During, during school hours. Drop off and pick up and all that stuff.
The path going from Pleasant Street to School Street to Pollard Road is a highway all day long with dogs and animals, and my cat runs freely out there all the time. And I'm, I go back and forth two, three, four times a day, depending on the day and what's going on at the community center, with my dog. Sometimes with my dog and my son's dog. That's, it's school property. I mean, they're always leashed, always.
I mean, couldn't it just be the, the paragraph that refers to anytime?
How about we just take number two out of there? Read it, read that without number two.
Animals are not allowed in school buildings at any time?
Correct, unless authorized.
Yeah.
Examples, blah, blah, blah. And then anytime while in school buildings or on school grounds, animals must be caged or on a leash in control, and waste must be picked up, blah, blah, blah.
Well, what that means is.
Two, you're not saying anything about the grounds until that part. You're saying they can't be in the building unless authorized, and then you're jumping to say they can be on the grounds.
Right. Or, or you want to spell, you can, animals can be on the grounds when you walk your kid to school, or during the day when you're going from School Street to Pollard Road, or if you walk from Pollard Road that way to Connecticut Road, but otherwise they can't be, it's just, it's too confusing.
I agree with Tammy, removing number two. I think that you, if you remove number two, there's nothing that authorizes animals, domestic pets, to be on school grounds at all. And then you would have to get approval from, through the process laid out on the first page, or having any animal on the ground.
Anytime while school buildings or on school grounds, animals must be caged or leashed.
Yeah, that doesn't provide any grounds for approval. That doesn't suggest in any way that they're allowed, though. And it said, and then if you just leave one, animals are not allowed in school buildings or at any time.
Suggestion to fix it.
It's just to clarify what we're talking about here. So animals aren't allowed on school grounds.
I want the solution. I, I.
Three times, one, one sentence that says, specific to grounds and rather than a building. That, that's literally all you need. You don't have to give the details of the.
You have to have permission to be in the school, and the other ones, the outside of the school, is just you have to be leashed. Well. In that paragraph, anytime while.
So cross out not and unless authorized. Is that what you're saying?
In.
Yeah, the number two, cross out the word not, and then cross out unless authorized.
So.
Well, not unless authorized, because they're not going to come get permission. They're allowed on school grounds during. Oh, yes, yes, perfect, yeah. Yeah. And then you talk about the caged or leashed in below, and then you're citing both buildings and grounds covering both places.
I mean, you could add it there, too, if you wanted to. Animals are allowed on school grounds during school hours, comma, leashed and under control, or something. And then reiterate it in the next paragraph as well, or not.
That, I mean, that takes care of it.
Yep.
So the, the, if that's, if that's the board's intent, I guess, to say, at any time during the day, if you have a, a leased pet under control, you can walk your kid to school, you know, you can walk through.
So number two should read, animals are allowed on school grounds during school hours, comma, leashed and under control, period. Animals are allowed on school grounds after, after school hours. All right, let's get rid of that one, because it's redundant, and put during and after.
During and outside of school hours.
During and after school hours or outside of, outside of is fine.
And you just said in a court of the following paragraph.
School hours, leashed and under control, and then we'll reiterate it. Reiterating is fine, so. You ready?
I, I've got a recording, so.
Okay, perfect.
Perfect.
So number two.
I go to that. I don't go to it very often, so.
Number two will read, animals are allowed on school grounds during and outside of school hours, leashed and under control, period. Everything else is the same.
What happens when a parent brings their dog to visit during recess?
That's during school hours, and that's on grounds.
So they're allowed to do that, leashed and under control.
Thankfully, people don't typically do that.
Right, but I am just playing.
Yeah, yeah, for sure. They're not.
Okay.
No, for sure. It's been fine, so, yeah. We just need the policy to match what's been happening, and we thankfully haven't had any issues, you know.
I'll just laugh because we just announced that everybody that take your kid here, take your dog.
Do not.
No.
Not even parents are allowed to, you know, enter the playground, lilly-nilly. There are laws to protect the children.
Yes.
Dogs are no dogs. It's not allowed.
The dog.
Yeah, exactly, yes. Are you okay with that?
Yep.
There we go, guys.
All right.
That.
That was the other, or the other, only one I had a question about was J I C L dash R, school district internet access. We were going to check with our tech director with that one also. Was that done?
We did, yep. That was in the email that I sent to the policy committee.
Oh, I read that, but I, I missed it, I guess.
Yeah, we checked with Trey. There was more information that needed to be added about.
There are a few revisions. I'm assuming they were his.
Yes, the third party, a little more explanation on third party side.
Perfect, perfect. Um, that was the only other thing I had, I think.
Presumably that policy tracks recent changes, legislative changes about student privacy and records and all that stuff. I know we had a, it was a big. Change to, you know, what the students were allowed to use, and the services had to ensure that they were taking steps to protect students' privacy. And so we, you know, there was going to be limits to what the students could access.
Yes.
And the services that we could use.
It's pretty complex.
Yeah, and so, and, and I think, again, that's probably, that's largely the policy at the, the school board association's suggested policy.
When is our next meeting? In July?
Board meeting or policy?
Board meeting. I'm just wondering.
July 20.
And is 20th not doing those until the 20th of July? Does that give you enough time to get them in the handbook?
What I'll do is I'll move forward with them on first reading to get them into the handbook, and then you'll approve the handbook and the policies on the 20th, if that works, because I can do any final revisions with the handbook, but at least it'll be.
Gotcha.
Yeah.
And that works for you, that timeline works for you?
Yeah.
Okay. I just said, no, if there's any, we have to push through for you tonight, that's all. It'll work that way for you on the 20th. Okay, fine.
Yeah.
I can at least get them started in there.
Perfect.
Policy I M D A patriotic exercises, is that okay now?
I don't know. There was a couple I just wanted to look at, and honestly, it's probably fine. I just have wanted to look at it.
So we can look at.
Yeah. Thank you.
It's all right.
And that one's not in the.
Yeah, that was the one Jay had the question about.
Yeah, that was.
So that one.
Okay.
The J I C L R is in the handbook, and the I M D is in the handbook.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So those were important ones to.
There was another one, too, the dress code one, right?
The dress code one, which had already, I had just dropped it off the list, so.
We went through it once, and then it fell off somewhere. Yeah, I think I asked a question, and then it didn't come back or something, yeah.
It did, yeah, it was just that, it was a typo on the agenda.
It's because you have nothing else to do but deal with these policies. I get it.
But you've actually received it in your packets every month? It just wasn't on the agenda, so it didn't get read.
So it's on there now.
Yes, yeah.
So that'll be okay. We'll still be able to do that by the.
Perfect. And I like the changes to the elementary anti-harassment one. Those are good. I still love that policy. I still think it, it needs to be like a weekly thing, every class room. Remember, you can't be mean. Do you have anything else? I'm going to make a motion to move these or not.
No, I'm good, yeah.
Do you have to move it? Yeah, I made a motion to move A C dash E, A C E, A D, A E, B E D H, B I E, E E A A, F F, G B C D, G C E B. Yeah, I made a motion to move A C dash E, A C E, A D, A E, B E D H, B I E, E E A A, F F, G B C D, G C E B, G D B dash R, I F dash R, I H B C A, I J O C, I K F, I K L, I M B C, I M D A, I M G, J B A A dash R two, J I C A dash R, J I C L dash R, J L C J, K B, K B dash R, K L two, second reading.
One second.
Yes, Ben, any further discussion on those? All those in favor, things by by saying aye. Close, extensions, non-motion carries.
And we're going to wait on the withdrawals until after second readings are approved, correct?
Sounds like what we want to do.
Yeah, thank you. Okay.
All right. Anything else in the policy?
No.
All right.
Thank you.
In, in your packet, we're talking about committees, you did get minutes from your other meeting that you had.
Oh, the non-public.
Yes, but those are just the, the meeting minutes from that.
So we are going into non-public anyways, so you can update the board.
I just wanted to know that it was.
All right. Nomination, recommendation, resignation?
None. And B, that should be goal, G O A.
Code.
So, yeah.
And all right.
Do we?
We could easily do that. We could do these goals in, in the September one, because you will have two meetings in September.
Okay.
So if you want to do that, because otherwise you could do it an hour before, you know, we could do it, you know, an hour before a meeting, so you don't have to have a separate meeting for it.
Right.
Yeah.
Do we have copies of the goals from the last few years?
Yeah, I will give all of that to you, and I will give you the strategic plan again, so you can see what the strategic plan looks like. You know, because you, you want everything to come together, so there's not five different documents.
I do think that she sent them out, because I asked you for that a couple months ago.
Okay.
They were sent out. Maybe it makes sense to send them out again, just so they all have in one place with, with the.
I missed them. I mean, I can go back.
She may have just sent them to me.
Oh, okay.
But that's.
They were a part of the packet for a couple weeks.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah.
I remember seeing them. I remember, we had, the discussion was, do we need to do this now that we've got the strategic plan? Because we had sort of put it on hold pending the strategic plan, but after looking at it, they were considerably different.
Yeah, I think the goals would come first and then the strategic plan and how you're going to do. So goals will be in September. That's good.
New business, board review of D F A revenues and investments.
Yeah, that's a policy that you have in your packet. It just has to be reviewed on an annual basis. It doesn't have to be voted on. It's just that the board has it and may have read through it in fifteen minutes. That's the.
Where?
What is that one? Do the initials on that one?
D E F.
D E S?
Okay.
Oh.
It's not in your policy packet. It probably was set up policy, right?
It's part in there if we weren't.
D F A?
Yeah.
Yeah. References, I R S A one ninety-seven, colon, twenty-three, dash, A, right at the get-go, and that is very specific. That is, that, I R S A doesn't leave a whole lot of room for interpretation there, so.
Is there any, you know, except the motion to make any changes to this, if anyone thought that we needed to, but other than that, the minutes come out that we reviewed it and no changes were made. Then we guess the records reflect that we review the policy and recommend the changes. COVID nineteen.
COVID nineteen, the only update is that, excuse me, the commissioner had stated on Monday, just passed Monday, that the, any, any changes, but we still have to send change and make any changes for June that need to be made. And if you do, you do not have to send it to the state anymore. So you just make the changes wherever you have it in your website or whatever. We don't have any changes to make, so everything's the same right now, so we're just leaving it the way it is. If you have minor changes, you could do that. If you have major changes, then you would take the major changes and send it to the state, but they do not want us encompassing any minor changes for that.
Is that something we need to look at before starting next year?
I'm sorry?
Is that something we need to look at before we start next year?
Um, we're just going by whatever. I think it's every three months right now that they're, they're having us, and they haven't changed anything since then, so. Keeping up with the time.
Barring any significant developments in the infection rates and things like that, then I think we're probably just going by what is currently in place. Yeah, I'm just, if there's. If the information is outdated, I guess, is what I'm looking at, but should be, is it worth just a review to set the tone before we go into school?
Oh, we'll have it. We'll have to review it again before September.
Yeah.
Yeah, we, yeah, we will, yeah, definitely, but.
I mean, it hasn't been looked at.
Yeah.
Three months. February, March, was it March that we changed the policy? Before the vacation, when we came back, we had a meeting like Sunday.
The ESOP country already went over that.
Do not see any students or staff, actually. Do you have any?
Dominant observer.
Okay, and no community. So we are going to go into non-public, so I will pull the board from the non-public. Yes.
Yep. Yes.
Yeah, me, seven, and Brad.
Yeah.